Twenty-third.
Very good. Let's call this regular meeting of Marion County Board Supervisors through order, Mr. Randia.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Rainey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
I have entertained a motion on this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Jake, any communications received by your office?
No, sir.
Board, any communications received?
None.
No.
Okay. Then by me either? Alright, very good. Onto public comments. This is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comments, items not on this morning's agenda? Looking at the technology, looking at the audience, seeing none, we'll move on. Is there a motion for the consent agenda this morning?
Motion to reapprove today's consent agenda.
Second.
Rainey.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Very good. Short agenda this morning. We've got first a discussion on the website project and the branding and style guides.
We're doing well. Doing well. This has been a process that we're excited about and we're happy to have Brian with us this morning. And yeah, turn it over.
Sounds good. Well, good to be here. I appreciate the time and opportunity to see many of you again and be a person, kind of talk through what we've done. It's been a good back and forth with the committee since we started and, you know, probably looking through, I don't know, two or three dozen combinations of color schemes and logo ideas and, you know, things that could work for the county. And I think we had a number of goals going into this, but we wanted to create kind of a brand and style that we felt like could work across platforms, devices, in print, on the website. And think about something that can be adapted, that has a good color scheme with it, that could work on social media for pages here in the county, that could hopefully, you know, serve as a great foundation for years to come. So if we go on to the next slide that we're sharing, this I guess kind of restates what I said, so we can go on to the slide after that. Here's where we landed. So we have our dark blue is our primary color. We have orange and a lighter blue is a secondary color, and we also have a green. So when we look through, look through the plan, we want something that has a circular element that'll work on social media, that has that that design. We wanted something with a modern kind of readable font that would be good on the website. We wanted something that would translate to black and white, to white only, and that was something that we believe this logo does. And with the dot for the I, we wanted something that could speak to the nature in this county and thinking about all the parks and water and Lake Red Rock, getting some kind of incorporation of kind of a leaf and water combination. And again, that's another thing that we looked through a lot of different combinations of, we looked through a lot of different fonts to come up with something that we felt like was, you know, replicable, licensable, easy to, you know, added print, have readable, the small size, that sort of thing. So that's what the primary logo mark looks like. If we go through the slides, we can share a few other things and obviously chat about it too. The next slide shows a couple of alternative options. So one of the things that we think is cool about this logo and especially the circular design is this opportunity to give each office, each department, each official kind of group its own branding. So here's an example of what the brand would look like with the auditor's office, and then we could do the same thing for supervisors, for treasurer, for, you know, engineering, whatever department or office we want to adapt this to, there's that opportunity. And we have not officially kind of broken these up and divided them out, but our goal will be to give you, our, you know, commitment is to give you this large digital folder of files that that you can use as necessary, whether you're putting it on a letterhead or a business card or, you know, on a vehicle, that sort of thing. The right column gives a sense for what it can look like in black and white, and I think it does look really sharp. I think the bold text comes across really well. And that white option could be used on, you know, as any kind of a solid color background. So we have it in black for this demo, but you could use it on the dark blue, on the orange color, on the green, on the light blue too. The next slide shows the fonts that are used here. So all these fonts are available. There's not a licensing fee with them, so they're ones that you can download and access and use on machines, on the internet. Molish is a Google font. Coco Gothic Small Caps is through my fonts.com and it's one that's available. And then we have four primary colors that come out of this. So there's the dark blue, which I think you'll see a lot of. There's the orange, which I think goes really nicely as kind of an accent color. You'll see that on the website design preview that we'll look through at the next slide. The light blue, you know, complements the the dark blue nicely. And then we have green in the mix too. I know one of the things we talked about with Carla, who was on the committee, is, you know, really you could extend this to kind of a six-color palette because you could look at a lighter or darker orange, you could look at a lighter or darker green. So there is some flexibility to kind of stay in the same family. I think we have a lot of kind of nature tones that kind of fit in the theme of the logo here. The next slide shows a preview of what one of the sections of the website could look like. This is for the recorder's office. Certainly we're kind of at a mock-up point with some content, but they've they've given us a lot of content, so we've had a lot to work with, so we kind of use them as an example. And if we want to go one slide further, we kind of zoom in on the top half of the site. So using that orange color as a top bar, in the upper left, we have the idea of having social media links. I think this was popular with the web committee. And basically helping residents in the county find an idea of what departments, you know, what is the presence on social. So if you click the Facebook icon, you'll see a list of departments that have an active Facebook page. It won't necessarily be one link that just takes you to the county's overall page, but it'll be something to kind of help people drill down to the department they want to follow or keep up with. Same with Twitter, same with YouTube, with the audio for the board of supervisors, for example, can be there. We bring in the weather and then, and I think these are all things that are a little bit subject to change as we, you know, go through the website committee meetings. But bid notice is having a spot up there, I think makes a lot of sense. Calendar events for people who, you know, want to know when the next meeting is, whether it be supervisors or a board. Employment opportunities, getting that in a centralized place and really working to make that process more online-driven. Frequently asked questions, a great opportunity to kind of, you know, reduce courthouse traffic, reduce phone calls if we can, if we can get people to, you know, find an answer. At least when they do come in or call, they are prepared and and have some information in advance. And then we have a translate feature too, where you tap on it and immediately you have Google Translate, so the site would default in a Spanish language, or you could you could convert that to other languages too with just the click of a button. The logo, we have it designed to kind of go into the content. I think with the circular style, it has that ability to kind of expand and be a little bit bigger than the navigation. And then again, up for conversation as we go through, you know, the next few weeks and continue to build this website, but something to send people into content about the county. So it could be communities in the county, it could be that database of cemeteries that you get a lot of calls about, you know, over time. Board of supervisors having a landing page for meetings and minutes for, you know, or minutes and agendas for these meetings, departments each having their own landing page and service pages, and then also a contact directory. The top of the page, and this will be very, we have some drone video that that Andrew helped get us together for the homepage. For department pages, we have a ton of photos from Carla that we can either work in randomly or specifically, so conservation always is seeing a more nature-focused photo, or the attorney could have one that's more of a courtroom. Or we could just go through a cycle, like the Iowa flag or the courthouse. And so there's an opportunity for each department, each page on the website to have some introduction text to kind of set the tone. And then we wanted to bring in contact information at the top too. So ours, a link to schedule the appointment with the appointment scheduler for departments who use that, and the ability to generate a map and drive me directions. So if you pull this up on a phone and, I mean, I guess, I think you could probably figure out how to get to the courthouse, but I know there are a couple of different buildings that departments are in and, you know, I like point up a map just to get an ETA of where I'm going, so that, you know, make that easy to do on the website too. The next section again shows a concept for how that page may, you know, go beyond that introduction text and really working with departments to identify, okay, what are the services that are offered here? What are the resources that need to be available for members or residents of the county and be an icon-driven? And we've looked at a few different styles, and again, this is something that could change. We could see circular, we could see, you know.
Because we can change colors in that too, right? Not have all solid colors.
Yeah, so if we want to, you know, this is again kind of draft one, as we're thinking about how that logo and that color framework can be extended. But anyway, sending people in there, and then if we went down the page further, we'd see a map and that sort of thing. So I feel like I've talked a lot just to kind of go through the start, the origins, to kind of how this this brand can be applied to the website. So happy to get any feedback, answer any questions or anybody. I know there's several committee members in here if you want to add any comments. Happy to hear those too.
Does the committee, would like, would anybody like to speak on behalf of?
Well, I'm certainly not a stylistic designer person, so I don't have a lot of comments. I know the committee went through lots of different iterations of different things and and design elements and colors and things. I was pretty happy with the choices that were made, and I think the the committee was very happy with with the look and feel of it. We definitely went through lots of different options. I thought all of them looked good, so again, I'm not really the person to ask about this stuff.
So if we decide on something, when, what's a timeframe when it when it becomes functional?
I think that's a good question. I think from a technical perspective, you know, we probably need on my team, you know, a couple of weeks to really get through and make sure we're creating the versions we use, giving you, you know, we'd probably even share out the, you know, Adobe files. So if you needed to add a new department name or make some variation, you know, something you or Carla or somebody, you know, maybe somebody in the IT team could do.
I mean, I'm not looking for a hard date. I mean, it's it's not it's not going to be, it's not going to be six months or eight months or 10 months.
We'd have it in your hands in a couple of weeks. I think your probably most natural rollout to the public would be when we launch the website, which we have pegged around May 14th. So that would be the first step. I think things like business cards, letterhead, those could be rolled out gradually as there's need, you know, when you when you have needs to print new, print new materials, I'm not sure.
So so we have departments that, I mean, obviously, I get that. Is there a a place that would be like for general information? The only reason I bring that up is because I'm thinking of the the VA demo and everything, things that could be placed on that. Is it going to be very easy to to put stuff on there? I mean.
Yeah, I think.
Are you talking about the website, Steve?
Yes.
Yeah, so I I think that the goal, I mean, if you want to go back to that that first page, I think the goal is to have some news information as well. On that, on the.
Yeah.
Because that doesn't show your homepage.
Yeah, this is just.
This isn't the homepage, this is the departmental page, but kind of below the fold, the the idea is to have some some news information.
Okay.
That is updated frequently, like weekly probably.
That's where I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's another, you know, a little bit of extension of what we wanted to share, something we felt pretty comfortable with. There's some more conversation with the website committee, you know, how does our homepage look and feel? I mean, a great video, where do we want the news? Trending topics is another opportunity, so if you know, if something is a hot topic people are looking for, just giving them one of those icons and and letting it kind of sit there on the homepage for a while too will be a possibility.
The simpler the better, so people don't get aggravated trying to search, trying to find something.
So a hot topic right now is paying your property taxes, right? Because this is, is this the last week?
Wednesday the 31st will be the last day.
So that'll be a moving target, that day.
So we would have, we would have a button right there, pay your property taxes. Once property taxes are kind of done, that might fall off.
Right.
And something else might come up.
Okay.
And then, so there's definitely some dynamic content that will be focused on the on the homepage for sure.
I have a question. I like it. Why orange? That's my only comment of the why or, I'm, I was surprised with the orange in there.
It's a palette color, so it's complementaries.
To what you already did.
Yeah, to the others. That's.
I like it. The orange just shocked me.
I would not do orange, like, to me, I wouldn't do orange in every button, if that makes sense, you know.
A palette color that's complementary.
I picked that up, Steve.
And and I think we tried, we really wanted to to stay loyal to, you know, the red, white, and blue color scheme. And and to me, the the orange on that screen over there is a little more representative of what it truly is. I feel like on that screen, it's maybe a little bit lighter.
Yeah, this looks, this screen looks a little washed out. That one looks more accurate.
Yes, yes, you know, we wanted to stay close to like a burgundy orange, kind of a rustic red was was our goal.
And if I can interject, this is Carla, sorry, I'm on two calls right now, but blue and orange are complementary on the color wheel. So if you know anything about color theory, typically those colors are paired together because they are complementary colors.
I don't care what color it is, long as it works.
We we have a, we would probably adopt similar colors. We have the digital signs up at the courthouse, if you guys have seen those. I would take these color codes and and apply those to our signs as well up there. And probably if you guys would approve a this this branding logo and things, we'd probably try to implement that in there as well.
Do the colors align with Microsoft Office?
Yeah, we shouldn't, shouldn't have any problem there. We could definitely help, you know, work with the theme or something that, you know, Andrew could probably help finish that sort of thing. They have text values.
And what about the text in the body of a document? Because it looks a little bit. I don't know what I want to say. It's not as rigid as like Times New Roman, you know, so.
Correct, it's not.
Soften the edges. I didn't know how how that would look. Is it easy to read, you know, in a body of a text, there's a lot of text that the eyes got to look at.
Yeah, so our font.
I guess are we looking, would that apply? I mean, we, because we have templates. Would we update all of our templates in Word to to that scheme?
Are you asking if that font would carry through into the body of the document?
Yeah, because I I wouldn't.
Because that's not what I envisioned.
Yeah, me neither.
Or mine.
Yeah, different.
So we, I think there is a slide in here where the bold header font that's actually part of the logo, the Coco Gothic, that's one that would be used for the logo or potentially page headers, you know, people's names on business cards where you have a larger opportunity. We've suggested a complementary font of Molish, which is free from Google Font, is something I'm sure we can work with to get pushed out. It is a sans serif font, so it doesn't have the edges of Times New Roman. I tend to believe that the sans serif is a little more readable. I think it works really well for large, you know, amounts of text, but it's probably all up for debate a little bit.
I guess I'm lost in what Tyler's asking.
He's he's saying that he would use the same font it's in, correct me if I'm wrong, you'd use the same font that's in the logo in your body of your letters or your, whatever you're writing.
Yeah, we do now, and we carry that through our document. I have a template for memos and letters of transmittal and and letters, so we just go in there and we change the body and who it's addressed to and. You know, so in our template, I would want that to flow through the document, because I may have a footer that's got that text and a header that's got that text following the style.
To me, you would do separate.
Completely different, right?
So you would want, to me, you want the logo and then at the end, and your your letter font different.
Yeah, if if you go maybe four or five slides in, there's the page that shows colors and, yeah, one more, I guess five. Colors, and so like, we would not recommend that kind of all bold, you know, text from the logo for just your regular document type. We have recommended a couple of complementary fonts that you could use for your text and your and your document if you wanted to.
This one for document headers and then that one for letter. Okay, because I would envision, like on my tax statements, I would have some sort of letter headed at the top, but the body of the tax statement, that's going to look the same across the state for every county.
That that doesn't change.
Carry an alternate font throughout the body of that tax statement.
Yeah.
I do now. I just didn't know how how that would look.
And we're happy to.
And you said document text there, so that's why I wondered, you know, that.
Well, just to, can you go back to the website or the, is there anything else you wanted to cover as far as in the slide deck?
No, I think this covers through the the slides for today.
So next steps. What do we need? What do we need to do?
So I think the first next step would just be the approval to be on board with kind of continuing down this direction in terms of the logo mark, in terms of the color scheme, in terms of those fonts, at least to an extent, not saying they have to be set in stone. And then we'll continue to build it out, and then we'll continue to work on, okay, what's our homepage look like for the website? And, you know, maybe a month from now, if it makes sense, I'm back here and we give another update to kind of share how things are coming together, you know, beyond just now we have that style and branding established, how are we executing it?
What is the committee's recommendation?
Committees?
The committee's bringing this to the board as a recommendation.
Well, how's, I mean, I know, I understand that. Is everybody in agreement?
Yeah, we unanimously agreed on this this style and branding guide.
And we have gone with Brian. We probably, is this the third version that we worked with?
Yeah, I think it's the third iteration. Like I introduced, I mean, we've probably had, what, 25 different combinations or probably more when you look at fonts and colors and backgrounds and we've had a lot of ideas. And and there are some limiting factors because we want this to be something that works online, works in print, works in black and white, you know, could be embroidered in a T-shirt or a, you know, polo. I think I think when you start to bring in all those requirements, you know, you're a little bit limited in in how, you know, creative and exciting you'd be. But I think we came up with something that's really modern, that'll work well on the website, that'll work well on social, that can work well in print, and has that good palette that we can play with. And yeah, it doesn't mean we're going to use exactly that orange for every icon and maybe green icons or it might be more dark blue, but we have, we have a a set of colors that are defined that we can build from.
Yeah, the main thing, and this goes back to to Steve's question, when we roll this out, I mean, we need to modernize our website, no question. We need to modernize and be more business-like in how we approach this, but there also has to be an aesthetically pleasing view as we want. It goes along with everything else we're doing, whether it's the VA project, Prairie Ridge, the courthouse, we were upgrading. This is Marion County 2.0, and we need to get there. For our residents, it will take time to learn any new technology, but you're comfortable with the fact that this is something that will be fairly easy for folks to catch on to once they see it.
Yeah, I mean, I I think our goal is to, from day one with the new website and we have this new brand, I mean, it's, the brand's a piece of it, but it's also making sure it works great on phones. Making sure that the news that people want to read, the links that people want to click, like the property taxes, that those are front and center. And another thing I think we've done, and you don't see it in this mock-up, because this is just a sample landing page for one department in the county, is making sure it's it's a user-friendly search. And some of our best example websites, I think, for the counties we've launched in the last year, you start typing in birth certificate and you get right to the page that tells you that information. Or I could see, you know, VA is a big hot topic, people start typing that in, or type courthouse renovations, or type, you know, we want people to be able to find exactly what they're looking for. And we have analytics and statistics too that we can, we can figure out once we launch the site, so we know, hey, everybody's clicking on this and people aren't finding this. There's an alert bar, so if there's some important message, if, you know, snow shuts down or there's a snow emergency or something like that declared, you could, you know, have that pinned to the top so people who hold the website see that.
Brian, so that they understand ultimately this isn't live, so it's my understanding that you'd be able to go over those and they would kind of bold out or click whatever, you know.
Actually, the the mock-up we have is like you hover over one of these and they change to orange, or we could do that blue or green. But again, I don't want to get too, I just want to kind of show these slides as an example of how that brand could kind of be extended to a website.
Yes.
I think if the committee is comfortable with it and they don't see any glaring conflicts, I I I respect the committee's opinions, so I'm, whatever the committee wants, I guess I'm happy with.
Yeah, I am, I am fine with, that was the whole point of having a committee in the first place. Get to a place where we could agree, whether it's style, logo, and direction for the website. So if this is where you've all landed and you've got input from a variety of sources and perspectives, I think that's exactly what we want, so.
Yes, Kim.
Okay.
I'm I'm wondering, how how is public health going to, we've got a separate website, will will we eventually fold into this? Will we, will it be a link to ours? What what will that look like?
I thought that, I thought that was the ultimate goal when we started this, but I I I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
The ultimate, the ultimate objective, Kim, would be that we folded in.
Yeah, but it's not going to probably happen.
For county departments to have their own independent websites. It just doesn't. Any business, any business wouldn't have, you know, they they would all fold together under the corporate head unless you got something that's like a conglomerate of, you know, Berkshire Hathaway. We're not Berkshire Hathaway.
I think it's going to be in steps though. I will tell you that.
Yeah.
Yes. We're going to upload and then we were going to look at.
Do you foresee a problem with that?
No, no, I just want to know.
Public health and cars.
Originally, we had kind of always had a kind of a multi-staged approach. The first stage was replace the site that we have right now. And then the second stage, I think, was was to consider public health and also consider Carla's got a few different economic sites. So two, maybe even three stages. First stage was Maine courthouse, Maine Maine county website. And then the sites that are a little more modern like yours could maybe wait till stage two or three and then start folding it in. But yes, I think the ultimate goal was to bring everybody under the same umbrella, same same platform, same site.
And I think just for what it's worth, I mean, one initial goal though is making sure if people go to the new website that we have and they type in public health, they can get to your site.
Right.
That they can find your information.
Yeah, and they can, they can do some some hooks and things into your site.
Yeah.
In the interim, right, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Very good. Very good. So. What do you need from us? Just go forward and keep going or what?
I think we need a motion for the acceptance of the the style guide and branding and style guide, so that we can keep moving.
All right. Steve, you want to make that motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Johnner?
Aye.
Combs?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody. Organizing it and doing all that, that's, that's great.
Good project so far, yeah.
Love has come a long way since our first.
It has. It does. It's coming. It's, and it was challenging, I won't lie. It is, yeah, trying to.
Sometimes you take, you gotta break a few eggs, right?
That's right.
Next.
Sorry, I guess me today not like.
We have an annual evaluation.
That's right.
Missy Popperberg. And Missy, you wanted an open meeting.
What's that?
You wanted it for an open meeting. I want that for the record.
Yep.
Right. Okay, we've got, Missy heads up our zoning and land use planning office, and this is annual evaluation for her. You all have, as a board, you've got job descriptions in front of you, and you have last year's evaluations. So Missy, feel free to come and take the hot seat if you'd like. I mean, don't go back. Very good. So I will open it up for discussion. I think last year, Missy, we did a. We did a salary increase to around 57, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, which was pretty significant.
Correct, yes.
Okay, good.
We got you up to the average, is that correct?
The average zoning administrator by ISAC's website, ISAC's website, yes.
All right, okay.
Okay, very good. Board, do you have any questions for Missy? Or Missy, anything you want to open up with?
It's been a crazy year. Through pandemics, 911 changeover with data and getting that ready. We've had the biggest year in my office in 20 years as far as petitions, building permits. And everything being virtual meant packets had everything that you presented and we had 19 petitions had to be sent out to board members, as I have board members that only join the meetings via phone. So it's it's been a big year. Just another round of updates to the ordinance to be reviewed, so also working on that. Those come from trying to simplify processes and obviously just as with any law, they come from when we see problems or changes or things that need to be addressed. Zoning's an ever-changing world, nothing's ever the same, so.
Missy, oh, go ahead. And regarding, you have before us the job descriptions, could you highlight to us what you're looking at trying to change here a little bit, since we just got them this morning?
The the one. The one from 2008 was very basic. That's when the two, when. the one from two thousand eight was very basic, um, that's when the two, when nine-one-one zoning and sanitation, um, were split apart.
Okay.
So, you know, a few things that show up in the old job description, it says, provides administrative support to environmental health and nine-one-one, I haven't done that in several years. So, you know, there's, obviously we've taken on the online permitting in, in two thousand fourteen, which, Kim helped us write that grant, um, that's something, again, during pandemic was most beneficial, an administrative role to get that up and going, uh, many GIS duties have expanded, they started with, um, in regards to doing maps and stuff for petitions and, in, uh, the zoning department, and then, when we went to adding our own address points, uh, for new addresses and nine-one-one in relationship to, uh, new building permits. And again, we've always, um, the number one question when people are gonna build is how do I get an address? And the process has always been built in that we, first you would get a building permit, then you're issued an address, subject permit, driveway permit. That ensures that everybody follows the correct process and we don't have things starting without all the proper permits in place. So, you know, that's kinda become proficient in GIS, um, so, yeah, that's kinda the biggest, I guess, we, you know, working on different policies, procedures, like I said, ordinance updates, um, we used to rely solely on, like, Snyder to write them and over the years of doing this for twenty years, sometimes I do a lot more research with what other counties do to write new policies, um, or ordinance, as I should say, that fit Marion County, sometimes when you have the consultants write them, they're more geared toward cities or bigger counties, so, work to make them fit Marion County.
So, Missy, let me ask just a couple of questions here, I get it in my head every year. Is your salary comprised of, is a component of your salary nine-one-one?
Two, twelve and a half percent.
There is a reimbursement for the, the assigned coordinate new addresses associated with building permits.
Okay, i- is that something, and are you continuing to do that? Is there continued support in that regard?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so when you were saying you don't do as much with nine-one-one, it's not that piece?
No, so back in the, in the day when, when John was here, even after the departments were split, I, I did the claims, I, I did a lot more of the administrative assistance stuff that I, I don't do anymore, I just strictly am new addresses associated with building permits.
Okay.
And incoming addresses from the cities.
Is this something, your job description, you did on your own or did you work with Lisa?
I did, I just drafted it and I just gave it to Lisa, um, so it was just something to give you a better picture, I guess, of, what the duties are today versus what they were at that point.
Okay, all right, okay, well, I know we had spoke about updating your job description and, you know, ultimately, I think it would be wise to work with Lisa, yep, yep. So, Kim, I appreciate you working on that.
Do you actually make the changes to the map documents or does that, you're done through GIS?
No, I do.
Okay.
That is something though that Nicole can do?
So.
For backup purposes?
Um, I don't know, she probably could be trained to do that.
I mean, to me, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know what, what the process is if we don't, you know, she's a department of one and she has, you know, a little bit of a system, so.
I think the, the, take a step back, the real high-level question, Missy, about the evolution of your job, which, like a lot of single department county jobs, always had these other linkages, like you did, you know, twelve percent comes from this department, something comes from this department, it's this, this, um, collection of different duties and different funding streams and some of it's for accounting purposes and, and, and those things, and I get all that. I guess my, my ultimate question to you is from a zoning standpoint, because last year when we talked about, uh, the raise and everything else, that was related to all of the permits you're getting, it was related to the volume of work.
Correct.
Not related to nine-one-one, not related to those things, related to the volume of work that has increased as a result of buildings.
Correct.
Uh, going up in Marion County, right?
Yes.
Um, and that has not slowed down.
No, that has not, we have, in fact, I have two meetings tonight, we have five petitions tonight, there was years we did five petitions in a year.
Right.
So.
So, so has the job, this, I'm asking for your opinion, you're the one's been doing it for a long time, okay?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, has the job evolved to a point where you don't need those linkages anymore? You don't need twelve percent to come out of nine-one-one and, I mean, GIS is different, different deal.
So I should clarify when I say twelve, it's a reimbursement, I'm more of a contracted, um,
Yeah.
There, it's not, it used to be my salary was a certain portion of this, that, and it was three different, and that was, um, redone, I believe in, I don't know if it's two thousand fifteen, I'm not exactly sure if that was, now.
Yeah, I guess what I'm just trying to understand, you guys tell me whether this is, what, why do that? What's the, what's the ultimate point? Is it just to make sure that for very specific defined duties, we're spending money out of certain buckets? Cause at the end of the day, the nine-one-one money comes from a different tax bucket than general funds.
I mean, it, it.
I, I can add a little bit to, I think institutional knowledge, I think part of the reason throughout that transition and stuff, I mean, with Missy's background and working with John and everything that's been there, she's been a great asset to my office on things. So I think part, to answer your question is, I think part of that stayed that way because of everything she's done, she has done in the past and we don't wanna lose that.
Yeah, but I'm not thinking in that term, Jason, I appreciate that, what I'm just thinking about is do we need to segment the dollars the way that we do? I'm just, I'm saying strictly the dollar.
It's just straight to fifty-seven thousand and there's not really a reimbursement for nine-one-one?
Yeah, is that?
Understandable.
Is that, because if you're, if you're providing support, which is the way I understand it, to nine-one-one, why wouldn't you continue to provide support?
Correct.
Right? And then we take that twelve percent and allocate that, like we've been talking about, Jeff, we need to do something with that million-dollar, bank account that we've got in nine-one-one and actually use it, so, it, it, is it twelve percent of your job is what I'm asking? If it's twelve percent of your job, if, if you're doing that much work for nine-one-one, or is it just as, on an as-needed basis?
It's on, and it's on an as-needed as building permits come in and cities send us addresses, um, I mean, I, I try and keep track of what happens in my office, some days I do better than others, so, um.
But it's all part and parcel of what you would do, if you get a new building permit, you're gonna have a new nine-one-one, it just flows, right?
Correct, yes, that's the flow.
Off of that work function.
Was it a check and balance at one point? Is that what you guys did it? I mean?
That has been in place since I started here, um, I mean, it's been in place for twenty-five years and yes, it's a check and balance to ensure that everyone makes contact with both myself, with Bridgette, with Tyler, um, to have all their proper permits in place before they start, because the number one thing they need is that address. So that, what has always been the checks and balance, so I, I understand what you're saying and, and I'm okay if you guys direct me that, you know, my salary stays at the fifty-seven thousand, there's no longer the, you know, the, whatever it is, you know, what's it, three percent, but there's no reimbursement and I understand that.
Yeah, I, I, and the reason, the reason I'm thinking in those terms, Missy, is because every county department, we could, we could, in essence, segment that way.
Correct, yep.
Jake's support to the Board of Supervisors, we could say that fifteen percent of his time is through the board, so you should get reimbursed out of ninety-nine for your salary, especially with as much support as he's given me over the years. Um, Jeff gets some, I mean, we could take each one of your jobs.
Yep.
And say you actually provide services to another department, so you should get reimbursed from their funds and you end up with an accounting nightmare.
And honestly, John and, and the board that were in place at that time set that up, that's the way it's always been since two thousand and eight, so, I have no problems with, um, continuing to do it and not having that reimbursement, if that, I mean, I'm out of fund eleven, if that works for the board, then, I have no concerns with that.
Yeah, I think it's something, it's probably outside of this discussion, but I wanted to address it, because I think we have to simplify how we pay people, if, if we truly have a contract employee, that is, I, I know we've got somebody right now working, Michaela hired her, but she's working for Michaela, part of the time for Kelly, part of the time for you. I get that, she's part-time, she's doing twenty percent, twenty percent and whatever other percentage, I get that, but you're a full-time person. Your salary.
Yes.
You're stuck, you gotta do this anyway, you don't get to say, hey, I don't think I'll do this today. Right? Anybody think they can just say, hey, today, Jason says today, I don't think I'll be sheriff? No, it doesn't work that way, right? So, so I, I think we need to maybe modernize that and some of the jobs like that a little bit, where we don't do that segmentation anymore.
And to, to that point, Mark, when, I, I know, I know that we, we hire outside counsel sometime.
Yes.
For, for your job and other job, how does that figure into the, the salary scheme of things? Where's that money, where does that money come out of?
That comes out of our budget, mind planning and development, so we no longer use Snyder, we use.
Yeah, that was something we authorized.
That's right, that's what I remember now.
To provide, A, take a little burden off of Ed's office.
Yeah.
And, and Ed has been very honest about this, that they, with their workload and sometimes the level of expertise needed in some of these areas, we needed additional support. For that, and I think that's why we went this down this road.
And that has worked well, um, we've been using Snyder for many years since two thousand eight, and more and more, we would spend the money to work with Snyder, and then the comment is we need to run it by the county attorney. So I think for workflow, for simplicity, for, to utilize tax dollars better, our better option is to use a zoning attorney that is kind of a one-stop shop, if you've got questions, she can help you write the ordinance and review it and not, cause I, I don't have the budget to pay Snyder to write it and then an attorney to review it, so.
What is the increase again? What did you said?
Three, three percent.
Yeah, okay, three percent on the, in the wage, but I'm talking about your increase, you said biggest increase in the last twenty years for, is that, is that correct on what you said for?
Oh.
The number of permits?
We did nineteen, um, petitions and, um, so there were sixty-one new homes, a hundred and seventy-two building permits. And the last time, um, I think the last time we had.
It was all in rural Marion County, I'm assuming, okay.
Yep, so, uh, two thousand two, we had a hundred and seventy-five building permits, but up until then, so that's, building permit-wise, um, that's the largest one, and. And the other, up till then, we've had, ten or twelve petitions and this year was nineteen, insight plans and.
Do you have, board, any comments on job performance? I took us a little off-field with it as far as structure and pay, but that's all right, I've been wanting to deal with this for a while. Steve, Kisha, any, any comments on that component? Cause that's why Missy's really here.
Yep, um, Missy and I had a meeting recently and it went well, and so we worked through some objectives that, you know, goals and I think, uh, she's definitely, you know, we have a great communication and that's, that's imperative, I think, so, I think we're fine there.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
No, I was aware of the, of the meeting and I think, I'm assuming it went well.
It went well, yes, it did.
Uh, no, I, I'm happy with the performance.
Well, you and I have talked a lot over eight years.
Yes.
All right, um, and I'm gonna go back to what I said last year a little bit and see, to bring us to this year, and that is, you know, I asked you to do and take on more, an additional assignments, uh, as far as certifications, and you've done all that. And I think the level of complexity in your job has increased. I, I, I don't think you should walk into these things with any surprises, I'm sure you're not gonna get any surprises from me, other than I think that three percent is merited. Uh, I think the number of buil- building permits we get in Marion County and the things that you've done to manage those, present those to the board, we've never walked into a situation where we've had to be guessing about those issues. Yeah, the pro, I make fun of the process, but I make fun of process all the time. And that, I make, Jake has, he's had to put up with this for eight years, right?
It is a process.
But, but you handle the process well, you keep it organized, you keep it orderly, and any, any of the large issues we've had to deal with, you've helped guide us through that. And I think that speaks well, we've not had any material blowback on these issues and I know other counties have. And that, from a board standpoint, that's exactly what we need, we need to make sure we're getting the right information, the right materials, that we can make good decisions. And you've always, you've always done that in the, uh, the low-grade years I've been on the board, so.
I think we have, you know, we all have, I know we have a circumstance this year that has made it very, um, you know, not that I didn't always try and follow a very strict process, um, but we have that circumstance that you, you have the process and you have to follow it and you have to follow the ordinance, black and white, um, because if you don't and you get into circumstances, it becomes, not a, not a good situation.
And, and the complexity, what, go ahead, Steve.
That's what bugs me, we have all these ordinances and laws in place that we're supposed to follow, but it seems like you can't do any job anymore without a legal opinion.
And lawyers gotta eat too.
Two boy.
So, no, Tyler?
I was gonna add this point anyway regarding Missy, uh, but from our perspective, we deal with Missy quite a bit. The, the building permits and the zoning issues are not getting any easier, and we know that in our department too, because the easy, the easily developable lots for homes and businesses are already gone.
They're gone.
So, it's getting more and more complex and harder to deal with and, so we appreciate the relationship.
That's why we have the ordinances in place.
Oh, well, that's, to your point you just made, you know?
Yeah.
That's why the attorneys have to step in, because the, the easy ones are done.
I value Tyler's department, Scott and Brian and I work very closely on, um, especially land division, they, we've come up with a new process to make that flow go better, um, we've pushed all of our surveyors to utilize the online permitting so that, when we don't have somebody walking in with a survey that need, they want approval right then, it has to be submitted, they have to have a chance to look at the driveway, both, parcel being split and the remnant parcel, um, to make sure that the flow goes well, uh, so, and Tyler's right, that's part of the reason that we had so many Board of Adjustment meetings last year, um, when the farmers sell off the ditches and the gullies, it's great, but then when somebody wants to build their building, it's out on the edge of the road, so here we are in the variance again, so, um, yeah, I, we have a lot of great departments that make my job, um, you know, easier, like I said, I value Tyler. Bridgette and I have been working closely on some very large cleanups that have been in the process for a while and we're actually making some headway on a few, so.
It's very nice to have another department to bounce ideas off of, and when we go out onto these sites, we can, we're each looking for our own things, but we can work together. Um, when we send out notice of violations to folks, we're working together on those projects, so it's been very nice to have her and I work with her on a daily basis, so.
And I would like to say, just as a resident, I really appreciate Missy's willingness to, to have those hard conversations when it comes to cleaning up properties, when it comes to, you know, making sure that our residents do follow the rules, you know, those aren't easy conversations to have and her willingness to sit down with somebody and make sure that they understand why we do things the way that we do, as a treasurer, sometimes she creates more work for me, but.
That was her.
So that was a good and bad comment?
It was all good.
Make sure, I'll make sure I write that down, Michaela.
I've already given my kudos to her, I mean, but, um, great working relationship, so, I, I for the comments.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, Cheryl, thank you. Board, any additional comments?
Thank you, Missy.
Thanks.
So it sounds like, so a couple of things, uh, we need to, uh, update job descriptions, so, good, Lisa, that's on you. All right, to get that done, we need to approve a three percent merit increase. I think that's it.
And then are we gonna review how the funding for next year?
Yeah, we'll start working on that a little bit, I'll work with Jake and have a discussion with Jake and Jeff. Yeah, we'll start working on that a little bit. I'll work with Jake and have a discussion with Jake and Jeff.
Her salary's completely out of fund eleven, it's a standalone. The, the thing that comes from that award is a one-time claim.
Okay.
It's not that difficult.
So we, so we, so we can talk about the accounts. That's an accounting, that's an accounting mechanic. No. No, got it.
Her department is a standalone here. It's a, it's a once-a-year claim.
Perfect, thank you. So I think those are the two items. Uh, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve, uh, three percent wage increase for Missy.
And review.
And review.
Yep, on the job description review upon what Lisa.
Second that motion.
Combs?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good.
Thank you.
Missy, thank you.
Thank you, Missy.
Next item is how to give Michaela more work.
Missy, you're up again.
Oh. So I throw that in there. Also known as Board of Supervisor Updates.
Right.
Mr. McCollum?
Uh, well, I, I have a heard-a-meeting this week, uh, probably, I'm gonna be talking with Chris on some thing, but I'm assuming that Corny didn't show up because of the weather, right?
That's my guess, yeah.
Okay. On the workout to the LAC, so.
Thanks for looking at that, Steve.
Yeah, you're welcome. That's all I have.
All right, very good. Mr. Johnner?
Had P and Z last night, um, have impact this week, um, on Thursday, and also a broadband information meeting with CARLA and some others, so, yeah.
All right, very good. Uh, not a lot for me, just continued work on the VA Project twenty-eight E review and finalization. From our perspective, will be coming shortly, along with submission to the City of Knoxville for their review. Funding, uh, discussions will take place Thursday or Friday, uh, and getting that process started. Now that we've approved the bid documents, that launches forward with a whole bunch of other activities now that we've gotta get a timeline built. I have asked, uh, our new addition to the staff here to help me with a workflow chart, because this is gonna be a big project.
Thank you, Renee.
Yes, Renee, thank you very much. We're gonna start working on that.
We'll require punching holes.
What's happening? What, you have fun already?
There's an inside joke.
Don't put up a Steve, it's all good.
So we'll work on that.
Do we, is, do we have a, a finished project from Confluence, like the Vision One? Do we have that yet?
Yeah, everything I've gotten from Knoxville so far is that they're going, that, uh, number one is where they're gonna go, and there were tweaks to number one. I think they have to go through a final approval, but Brian said that's where the council has landed, um, as they work with Confluence.
Okay.
So.
Cause I'm anxious to see that.
Yeah, we'll probably have to pull together a special meeting, Steve, here in the next, kind of, the week to kind of refresh, and we'll be doing these frequently to keep, there, there's just gonna be a lot of moving parts.
Right.
To this project. As you heard from the engineer, it's one of the largest demo projects in Iowa history, or at least recent, or recent history.
Ever, I think, is what they said.
What's that?
I think it was the biggest one ever.
You said, is that what they said? Very good. Anything else for the good of the order? Here we go. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Combs?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.